Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is December 19th and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. I would like to begin the meeting with a moment of silence in memory of the 20 children and eight adults who lost their lives in Newtown, Connecticut at the Sandy Hook Elementary School. Thank you very much. We'll have more to say about security in our schools later in the meeting, but I'll continue with public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the committee?
Let me have Brian.
Please.
Good evening, folks. My name is Michael. I'm a fifth grade elementary school teacher. And the humanities at Deacon's School and president of the Wareham Education Association. I just wanted to speak briefly on two matters. The first is, this is the first school committee meeting since Dr. Ivanovich announced his intent to retire. And I wanted to take a moment just to say that we salute the decades of service you've shown to the schools in Wareham and to the cause of educating the children of Wareham. We continue to look forward to working with you until your retirement and we wish nothing but the best in your future endeavors. I told the Standard Times this and apparently that wasn't juicy enough to print, but this is something that I think I can speak on behalf of many of my colleagues in saying. And the other issue, not to belabor any points, I'm wearing a green and white ribbon. Many of my colleagues are, many of us are wearing green and white. And I wanted to take a moment to add our, what tiny measure it may mean, our condolences to the families in Connecticut and to respect the incredible bravery of our colleagues who did make the ultimate sacrifice for who they think of and who so many of us think of as our kids. And I wanted to take one last moment to assure the school committee and the community that sense of protectiveness and I would even say grace that was in that hallways that kept that toll from being higher is in the hallway of every school, in the Wareham public education system, and in the hearts of the men and women who work to ensure their education every day. That is our top priority and it always will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the committee? I find it difficult to say the next thing, but we're moving on to good news. Is there anybody who has any good news they'd like to share? Mike?
Hi. This past Friday, I had the pleasure of going to the Minnetonka Forest School for a tour. And coincidentally, they were also doing a presentation. There was a guy there by the name of Brett, I'm gonna mess his name up, Brett Huchkounis? Huchkounis. And he did a seminar on basically, it was an anti-bullying seminar, but the way it was presented, it really flew under the wire, so the kids didn't know it was an anti-bully seminar, but he did a great job with those kids. And I had a great, I had a great time with Mrs. Siemens, you know, visiting while half of the class was at this thing. So I recommend it to anyone who has the time to do it.
Cindy, good evening. Anything you'd like to share about what's going on at the high school?
Last Friday, the high school had Rachel's Challenge at the high school. Eighty-five children participated and more signed up but didn't get on the list. So there was a lot of interest and from what I heard from the students who went, that they really liked it and it was really good. The art club is making snowflakes, decorating snowflakes for the Sandy Hook children. Ms. Dion received the newsletter and they said, make snowflakes so they can decorate the building that the children are currently using, so our club has made, I think, like 10, 15, this just got out like yesterday, so. And Mr. Palladino went on the morning show and he talked about school safety and he answered a lot of questions and I know the morning show can be seen, I think, at home for all of the Wareham parents.
I also participated in Rachel's Challenge, but my participation was at the middle school. For those of you who aren't familiar with Rachel's Challenge, it's a program that was started as a result of the death of a high school student in Columbine. And it is intended to continue the anti-violence and of course, anti-bullying and harassment and, as they would say, create a chain reaction of good feelings and respect for students and faculty and to promote an overall positive environment. I agree with Cindy, it was very well received and the participation was outstanding. There were probably about 80 middle school children and about two dozen adult volunteers. It was a joint effort of the middle school and the Scotty Montero Foundation, so I applaud both the middle school and the foundation for their efforts and one can only hope the spirit of those two days in the middle school and then the high school is continued because it's a very valuable learning experience for everybody, adult as well as student. Moving on to the minutes, we have the minutes of December 5th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Move acceptance of the minutes as written? If you'll hold on that motion, under, Michelle, under good news where you refer to my note about the collaborative, if you'd do me a favor and change the word attendance to enrollment. That's the second line under the bullets.
Enrollment.
So attendance should become enrollment and if you would change the word most to So Ken, if you would make that motion as amended, if that works for you, so move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussions or corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Four, five, zero, zero as amended. School committee reports. The policy review committee, I know we have a lot of policies to consider, who's leading this discussion? Cliff is, are you?
I'm very desirous.
Well, you're the chair this year? Yes? Yes.
If we can start with the, well, first of all, I'd like to thank the policy review committee for their work and their efforts. It's not an easy thing and it's another night out and sometimes we've just gotta scurry around to try and find people to take notes and to make the, use the computer and whatever because I'm really computer literate, so I really wanna, I wanna extend my congratulations and my thanks for those of you that put out an extra special effort. The first policy that we'll be considering here this evening is the budget policy. And while we did make some grammatical and minor grammar changes, the basic change in the policy is on the account numbers and also on the categories. So I'm sure that Dr. Ivanovich is more familiar with it than I am, but I think that this is congruent with what we're doing in terms of procedures now and so it just updates our policy to bring it into conformity.
Any questions from the committee related to this policy?
Actually, I do. And I worked with Mr. Fonsen, Dr. Ivanovich on drafting it and I was reviewing it yesterday and some things caught, when I got this report, the, you know, the five pager, I just had some questions. So, for example, when I counted all of these up, all of these accounts, it didn't seem to match with what, all of the accounts that were in the actual policy, the budget policy. If I, let's see.
If, I could be mistaken, but I believe there's actually three levels. There's, and feel free to correct me, Barry, there's the major accounts, then there's one level below that, and then there's a level below that as well. Is that a fair statement?
These are the budget line items in the five pager, right?
These are all done by the four-digit reporting code that we need for the, so they're not a full account. So for instance, when you look under, there's one account here for classroom teaching, so 2305, that is on the middle of page two, actually equates, as I think perhaps Chairman Swett was saying, to the teaching line item at Deacon's and the teaching line item at Minnetonka, teaching line item at the high school.
Right.
So it breaks down into maybe six other accounts depending on what the item is.
Yeah, and I get that, but in the, in the five pager, I count 59 accounts, but in the policy, I count 62.
Okay. Because there are some of these that we do not use, but I took this right off of the DESI website and it's just when we set it up, there were certain ones that we have not used.
All right, all right, I'm fine for now, but I think I'll revisit it when we get to the superintendents when we discuss this actual thing.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Anything else on this policy? I had two things. Under A, it talks about the submission to the town administrator.
Where are you at, Jeff?
I'm sorry.
Page two.
First page.
I see, I see, I see. Second page, right? A submission to, okay, gotcha.
Oh, you're right, it is the second page.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Submission to town administrator. I know there's a charter deadline of December 15th, which I think any of us, especially if you've worked on the finance committee, realizes how very early that is in the process. That requires the town administrator to submit to the board of selectmen a budget including numbers from the school committee, which we'll talk about later. Is this the reference? And if it is, then it clearly is not a budget adopted by the school committee. And I'm not suggesting that December 15th is an appropriate time for you to be handing a number that's approved by the school committee, but I'm just wondering whether this policy is in fact consistent with what happens.
There are actually two dates specified in the charter. And we have always used the second date, which is February 1st, for a voted number by the school board to give to the town administrator. Any number before that is preliminary because we do not have the state numbers, we don't even have House One.
Right.
So that's why by December 15th, we try to give a preliminary number, which has not been voted or tested by the school committee. That has been past practice.
I wondered if it would be appropriate if we put parenthesis, February 1st, at the very end of the sentence, so there's no ambiguity about the December 15th date.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Anybody have any problem with that?
That's what we actually do, so.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion that we add parenthesis, February 1st, after-town charter?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, that's an amendment to this policy. Michelle, do we need another vote or can we make that the vote for the whole policy?
No, that's just for that, that's for the amendment.
I think that's.
We need to vote for the policy as amended.
I think I agree with you, yes. All right. The second question I had was, on the third page, number three, superintendent will be authorized to replenish sub-accounts by transfer of up, by transfers?
Yeah, probably.
I think we probably should make that plural. Transfers of up to $5,000 or 5% of the account total within a major account. Is this intended to be one-time transfers or is this intended to be a total for the calendar year of up to $5,000?
I sort of had the same question during the policy review and what I inferred, and I think what the committee inferred, was that it's for each $5,000 or 5%. So they'd come back to the.
So af, I think it's meant as a one-time and if you're gonna do it more than that, then you need to come to the school committee, is the way I.
Right, like if you did, if you went over $5,000 and you came to the school committee and you say yes, and then you need to go over another 10 bucks, you know, next month, you don't have to come before, so it hits another $5,000 bucks.
I had a different, I was wondering if the intent was that a superintendent could make $4,999 transfers multiple times during the year without coming to the school committee?
If you want to clarify it, that'd be fine, but that's not what I inferred, but I totally respect what you're saying.
Well, I'm just wondering what the language was intended to communicate.
That language has been in the policy since the beginning.
I realize that. And I guess it's only because of, well, frankly, Mike's sensitivity to this issue over the last six months or so that I've been looking at it more closely and I'm, so mine is a question, it's not intended as a, it's not intended as to revise the language, it's what is the intent of the language?
Well, it's a fair enough question because, I mean, in a year from now, we'll have a different superintendent, right? So we should probably be clear about it.
Well, let's ask our superintendent. What is, in your view, does that language allow you to make multiple $4,999 transfers during the year?
No, because we try to spend in the right account and we've talked about before, if something happens and you have to go into deficit in an account. If the number that I needed to transfer was over five grand to make it right, I would have to come to the board. It's within that major account, but within that, so, you know, in a 4,000 account, which is like operations and maintenance and that's where these things normally happen, where, you know, the water main breaks and you have to dig up the road and it's $15,000, there's only, I don't know, maybe there's 13,000 in the account. I need to transfer three in to make that account balanced instead of leaving it in deficit and I have it in heat.
So if you had to make in one month a $4,000 transfer, you would feel fine. If you had to make a second transfer out of that same account a month later, you would then feel that you were transferring 8,000 and you'd come back to the committee?
That's correct. It's cumulative. It's the same thing like when we do purchase orders, you can't go to the same vendor for $5,000 four times because it's 20 and now you're over, you need quotes, so.
No problem.
I may be wrong in my interpretation, but I think the salient point here is the amount, up to $5,000. Anything over $5,000, they can't do. So you, I'm of the mindset that, and I may be wrong, that they can make five $1,000 transfers, but once they go over $5,000 in one account, one line item, they have to come over to the school committee.
Okay, I think we're.
Yeah, in one account, but now let's say you want to transfer from three different accounts, 3,000 bucks apiece. I don't think that comes before the school committee, no?
No.
Right.
No, no.
Okay, so if we just make a transfers plural and up, of, up to, adding of after transfers, I think we're all set, so.
It is, it does say up to.
Right, I'm adding a plural to transfer.
Okay.
And I'm adding of between transfer and up.
Oh, all right, transfers of. Okay.
Well, let's see, do we really need of?
I don't think so, but if you want that.
Transfers, no, we forget the up, you know, we don't need it.
We have some English teachers in the audience.
Yeah, exactly. No language is perfect, so let's leave it with just adding the transfers plural. Okay, I'm ready for a motion on the whole policy unless somebody else isn't. Yes, Mike?
And I gotta apologize because I've been, I've been working with Kenny and Dr. Ivanovich on this and I should have seen this beforehand and I apologize for not bringing it up beforehand, but I'm uncomfortable under pupil services where it's got in district transportation, no, that's non-net, correct? That's the 3,300 account?
Where are you at, Mike?
Can you, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, under the, you know, the major categories.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and under pupil services, the account 3,300, it's got in district transportation and that would be, that's non-net, correct?
Yeah, that is non-net.
And personally, I'm not comfortable keeping the non-net commingled with the net and I'd like to have that be its own separate thing, sort of like we do for the 9,000 account, which is the payments to out-of-district schools.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I would take that as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, but that doesn't conform with DESI regulations.
No, it doesn't, but I'll have to.
I think we need to conform with.
What doesn't conform?
Because I think DESI puts it all under the same thing, whether it's a net or non-net.
But you can, we're talking about transfers here, so we're just grouping things.
No, it's not transfers, that's just a group.
Yeah. Can we hold a second? I want to hear the superintendent, go ahead.
My belief here is that, for instance, sometimes when we have the three different schools and we wanted to take the kindergarten children from Hammond and on a day, move them to Minnetonka as a move-up day. That was paid for out of the school budget.
Chart of accounts.
So that was within the district transportation. So it was actually a net school spending cost rather than non-net, which is reported separately.
Yeah.
As a town expense. So we have to say what is spent, but it's reported on its own schedule on the end of the year report.
Well, if it's legal, I'd like to separate it.
But I don't have a problem.
This is a chart of accounts.
Right.
And it's a chart of accounts and it's recommended by DESI and I'm not ready to vote to go against what they deem as appropriate accounting procedures.
I think Cliff is making a good point. These reflect reporting requirements.
That's all, it's just a chart of accounts.
And we really can't change reporting requirements. On the other hand, Mike and the superintendent seem to be in agreement that shifting between net and non-net is not the intent of this.
Yeah.
Right, and in fact, these particular, like food service, okay, 3,400, it is illegal for me to use any of those monies for anything except for food services, so I couldn't transfer it.
And that was interesting because I didn't see that account in the five pager because I thought the whole thing was done by revolver.
It is.
Okay.
But DESI has a reporting code for it and they take the number from that revolver as just so that they can keep track of what we spend on it.
I must say, I tend to lead towards, lean towards Cliff's version of this, which is, I don't, I think we're on slippery slope when we start to mess with the reporting chart of accounts and since it's actually illegal to shift money between net and non-net, we can rely on the law to prevent what you're trying to achieve, Mike.
Well, all right, I think I see what you mean. I was, I was talking back to the whole school choice thing, but that's a revolver.
That's a revolver, exactly.
Got you, all right, all right, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Got you.
All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the budget policy as amended.
Okay, could we just go over those amendments before we?
Please. Michelle, you want to go over them or you want me to try and remember?
I think I have them.
Under three.
Under a submission to town administrator, we're just adding the parenthesis, February 1.
Correct.
All right. And under number three, the superintendent will be authorized to replenish sub-accounts by transfers, plural, up to $5,000 or 5% of the accounts total within the major account.
That's all I have.
All right.
Okay. Motion to approve, please.
Some of it.
I have a motion, a second? Second, Ken? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero. Okay. Next.
The next one is trans, transportation of persons requiring medical attention. And to my knowledge, even though we put this in the category might need debate, I don't think there are any changes to this policy if I'm not, I'll stand corrected, but I don't see any notes on my forms.
Any questions or concerns? I'm used to seeing emergency medical services. Is there a reason that we used in the third line, emergency medical technicians?
Now, that was in the original policy, I don't know, I don't have a reason for that. Because I think, because I think the people on the ambulance are technicians and technically you could probably call a nurse technician if they have to administer, you know, a refurbulator or whatever the case may be, I don't know. But technician is probably a little bit more broad.
Yes?
Usually the first responder are either the police or fire and some of them are EMTs versus the people that come in on the ambulance service.
It's a minor point. The other question is, the last sentence of the second paragraph, my question to you, Barry, is are we on solid ground asserting this? Any costs of the transportation not covered by the school insurance are the responsibility of the parent slash guardian?
It has never come up in my.
You're comfortable, by my mind, is you're comfortable with that sentence.
Well, I think that's on their forms in the beginning of the year, that their insurance will have to kick in for transportation.
When you say forms, you mean the athletic parental consent form or something else?
Well, not only that, I think there's all kinds of, beginning of the year forms, medical forms, I think it's on that too.
One other piece of information, we also carry a policy for all of our students for, that kicks in for any additional costs that insurance doesn't pay for.
Right.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? Motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Okay. Educational services to students identified as homeless or unaccompanied youth. I think there was one minor change on that, I may be wrong, and it was a typo and it was on the paragraph that starts the McKinney-Vento homeless, that was the, actually, it was the last sentence. The old paragraph had the word or, general categories or enrollment in school or origin and it should have been of origin. And so we changed or to of and to my knowledge, that's the only change on this.
Okay. Any comments or concerns? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Request for hearing with the school committee. I do not believe there were any changes to this policy.
Questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Five, zero, zero.
Policy on public record. Again, I do not believe that there were any changes to this policy.
Any comments or concerns?
I had one.
Yes?
The fifty cents per page, Dr. Ivanovich said.
Where are you at, Ron? Where are you at, Rhonda?
Under the five, under the fees?
Yeah, underneath the fees, so five A, five D.
Mm-hmm.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, Dr. Ravinevich, do you, is that standard across the board for that, that cost, the fifty cents per page?
It is not, it depends on the, um, amount of copies required. So the policy allows us to, the open meeting law or, or policy of public records allows us to, but in many cases, we don't charge.
So just to be clear, when it refers to chapters two sixty-two, section forty-three, and chapters sixty-six, section ten, those, with the language that we have in the policy is consistent with that, that, those chapters?
Yes.
And therefore, we have the ability to charge up to those amounts?
Correct.
Okay, so, what you're saying is, at times, when the costs are obviously significantly less, we charge less?
Yes, and sometimes we charge nothing.
Or, and sometimes we charge nothing.
Right, okay.
I had one more question.
Because I had the same thought, go ahead.
The other question that I had is that, do we ever suggest that we email or provide it electronically instead of printing it out or copying it? Because we must have some of this documentation online or scanned in. Because nowhere does it address that piece of it, that if someone does ask for it electronically, and if there's a cost associated with that, and should this policy address it being asked for electronically?
Mr. Chair, through you, please. Okay, absolutely, when, when the documentation is electronic, we do send it. But if we all can recall just back, I don't know, was it only two years ago, that we were asked for all kinds of logs from buses and so forth, that did not exist electronically, and came up to maybe four hundred pages of handwritten papers?
Isn't that covered under C?
And it seems to me E also somewhat covers it as well.
So if they are, exist, we do send them that way. To make a long story short.
Yes.
It, it doesn't address that the preferred way is to, and, and maybe it doesn't need to, but the preferred way is to send it electronically if it's available. Doesn't have to, if, I mean, it's already a procedure within the district.
We try to be green if possible.
Right.
Okay.
I'm not married to it, yeah.
Any other comments or concerns?
On the, through you to Rhonda, on A, were you just questioning the amount, or that there was even a fee associated to it?
No, it said no more than fifty cents, it was more that I was just asking, what is the standard across the board for what people charge?
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
Senior privileges, uh, senior privileges, I believe there were some changes on that. Yeah, there was no indication at all on the old policy that technically, uh, the school committee had to be involved in any way, shape, or form with the approval of senior privileges, because it does have to do with the school year, and it does have to do with daily attendance. The, the committee felt that the school committee should be involved on an annual basis on whether to approve or not approve senior privileges, so, um, the old policy ended with the word, and the first paragraph ended with the word not a right, and the, uh, the committee, the policy review committee added these following words, not a right, and the next sentence would be, therefore, senior privileges must be approved by the school committee annually.
Okay, anything else? I think on the first, last word of the second paragraph, first sentence, it, I think the intent was to make it lose, not loose.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, and the first sentence of the third paragraph, I think we can pull together can and not, and make it cannot.
Which one, uh, Jeff, I'm not.
The student, his, her, parents or guardian.
Which paragraph?
Last.
The last paragraph.
Oh, it cannot, yes.
Okay, and Rhonda, you had something?
Yeah, I just had one, we have seniors in the collaborative, correct?
Cape Cod collaborative?
Yeah, uh, the.
Co-op.
The co-op, sorry.
Oh.
In the cooperative school, yes.
So, it, does this also apply to the cooperative school?
Good question.
Yeah, it is a good question, isn't it?
It should.
Senior's a senior, they got the academic average.
And if it doesn't apply to the cooperative, then we need to say the, where am I, high school?
Good question, comments, superintendent?
Currently, there are no seniors going to the cooperative school, they go to the PM two, um, program, which meets in the evening.
And that's a new.
That's right, this year, yes, eleventh and twelfth graders.
Okay, but it, so you're saying, with PM two, it's moot?
That's correct, it's a moot question.
That's well dodged.
Well, seniors are seniors.
Right.
But I don't, they're not in the day program, so it's.
It's academic, so to speak.
Where's my English teachers, because why is seniors always capitalized? Doesn't have to be.
Out of respect for the fact that they got to get, to be seniors.
Yeah, I don't know why either, and, and no one picked that up either, believe it or not, had some English teachers on the committee. Huh?
It's the name, it's the name of the classification.
Classification, the name of the classification of the high school classes, got you, thank you. Right. Right.
And a classification, it would say senior class, not seniors. See that?
No, right, senior year should not be capitalized.
Okay. Let's, uh, are we, do you have a recommendation to, to make, professor?
Do I?
Yes.
Oh.
That unless it's a classification of senior class.
I'm learning from you, Mr. Sweater, on all your grammatical corrections here, that, and actually, my computer told me it shouldn't be capitalized, so.
Now the truth comes out. Uh, I think the other place that I can see right now, because it makes reference to senior class, but the only place it does not, um, is in the second paragraph, third line.
Senior year.
Senior year, that should be a small s, I believe.
Okay, so, where it refers to year, it should be a small s.
Small s, senior year.
Just as where it refers, in the next sentence, to junior year, it should be a small J.
Correct.
But otherwise, the use of the capitalized senior will remain because it's a classification.
Right.
Okay, any other corrections?
I can't believe all of us missed that loose, though.
Rhonda still has something she'd like to talk about.
Just one last thing regarding this, and probably won't happen, but if I was a senior in the night program, I would ask, where's my senior privileges? It doesn't talk about night in here, it doesn't talk about, so I'm sure that you're dealing with it, with it on a, on a procedural level, but I just.
It only has to do with study halls anyways.
Yeah, so, are you gonna let them out earlier at night?
I'm not saying that we should have senior privileges for the PM night, for the PM program.
I agree.
Senior privileges exclusively have been for unassigned time, if a student has unassigned time, and that is a, a characteristic of the day school, there is no unassigned time at the night school. Uh, when they're done, they're done, they go home, uh, so, I guess that's the difference, Rhonda.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve as amended, and the amendments are, we're making it lose instead of loose.
Correct.
We're making cannot instead of can not.
Correct.
We are changing senior to small s year.
Yep.
Junior to small J year.
Yep.
And I believe that's it.
That's it.
Is that correct? I'll take a motion to that effect, please.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero as amended.
Thank you very much, committee.
No, thank you, you're a very productive committee this year, um, and in most years, too. All right, um, let's move on to, I think it's the collaborative. This will be brief, I continue to go to collaborative meetings over in Osterville. At the last meeting, actually, there were two meetings related to this, one was a finance committee meeting, and the other one was the main collaborative meeting. The audit was presented, um, the collaborative is in good shape, as I think I may have mentioned, it is actually starting to reserve, uh, for, for the, um, the famous OPEB or other post-employment benefits, which is something that has to be noted on a town or institution's balance sheet, but doesn't actually have to be reserved for, and the collaborative has actually started to reserve for it. If you actually decide to use this document to assist you in falling asleep, because it's pretty darn dry, there is one minor error, because they actually list that OPEB on the balance sheet in two different ways, and it really is ambiguous, ambiguous. Nevertheless, I will pass it down to our junior member, and he can rotate it through as, as you see fit, but it is an important document. It's important inherently, but it's also particularly important because, uh, there was one collaborative that got in trouble with respect to its finances or in the Commonwealth, and, uh, we should never take the, uh, the money that is spent on public education, any, at, at all for granted, and the Cape Cod collaborative seems to be functioning very well. Any questions on the collaborative? Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Um, I'd first like to talk a little bit about, um, concerns about, uh, school safety, particularly in light of the horrific events of last Friday. Through email and conversations, um, the principals and I during Sunday evening, discussed what should be done, um, we put something on our website, a very small statement, that our hearts went out, um, to the people of Newtown, Connecticut, and that there was a reference there to something that people could open up and print, which were talking points about how to talk about, um, these kind of events, um, these tragedies, this violence, um, that occurred in a school, and basically erased, um, trust, I mean, most people think that you can send your children to school and trust that they're gonna be safe, and that's what this kind of event does. It makes everybody, um, question whether or not their child is safe, because of the randomness of the act and, um, and so forth, so, um, the principals, um, along with myself and Mr. Luzon, were in the buildings on Monday morning, um, earlier than, um, school opened, to make sure that people were available for any parents that came in and wanted to talk about, um, things. Many children, and in, depending on which side of town, um, we also asked for a second, um, resource officer that morning, so, um, Peter Sylvia was allowed to go to Minnet Forest, no, he went to Deccus, thank you, and I saw Joan shaking her head, and, um, Carl, um, went to Minnet Forest. And so we had, um, two resource offices, as well as central office staff, as well as our guidance department and school psychologists available to talk. But what we were trying for was to try to have as much normalcy, um, during the school day. When the children got off the buses, um, and I don't know, because I'm not there every morning, but, um, I noticed that some of the older children were, um, holding the hands of siblings and, um, actually walking them to their class. At, um, one particular school, you know, grandparents or other people were walking them into school to make sure they got in safe. But once the kids got into class, kids being kids, um, um, they went on with their day. It was handled differently on both sides of town, um, and that was principals' preference, as far as one principal deciding to have an assembly, um, with children to go through, and not in graphic detail, but to talk about that there was a violent act, and that the children are safe, and what the safety protocols are. And I've heard from at least two parents, or the principals shared with me, um, on one side of town, where we did not have an assembly, um, a parent thanked the principal for not having one, because the parent did not want to go into a certain level of conversation about the events with their child. Um, on the other side of town, there was a parent, um, who was happy about it, and there was another parent who was not happy that we had, um, an assembly, because they had not had the conversation with their child, and, um, you know, felt that the school should not have had, so, whichever way you decided to go, that it was not gonna, um, please everyone. The, um, protocols, I brought this, um, all members of the school committee, I believe, earlier this year, and I passed this out, these are our protocols. Um, every principal has one, teachers have copies, um, it tells you what to do in the event of a problem, and, um, unfortunately, the training that has been received up to this point talks about, um, a lockdown where people stay within the building, the door is locked, um, the window shade is closed, um, children are moved away from windows if there are any. But as Mr. Fitzgerald talked about, uh, the teachers, um, at that school in Connecticut, went off, they didn't do exactly what was in the protocol, and therefore, some children were saved because they didn't follow the protocol. So, what you learn from these things is that you have to be adaptable to the situation, and that is, um, some of the future training that will be going on, is talking about that. I know that, um, three of the schools I'm aware of, I'm not sure about the fourth large school, but at least three of them had assemblies with staff, went through protocols again to make sure everybody was familiar with them. And in fact, the Thursday before, um, this tragedy, the high school actually had a drill where we had somebody, Scott actually propped the door open on purpose, to find out how long it would take for a staff member to identify that there was an intruder in the building. And to then call for a lockdown, and, um, Carl Baptiste was involved with that. There were lessons learned from it, and they are coming up with protocols to learn from those lessons. After the holidays, we will make sure that we do these drills in all of the buildings to make sure that we have that same learning experience, and in fact, while, um, while we thought we were being, um, very diligent and having lots of people around, we found that there was a problem with our locking mechanism at one of our buildings, because it's actually a light switch of sorts. You have to, um, turn it one way to let the magnetism stop, to open the door, but when that door shuts, unless you flip the switch and put the magnet back on, it does not lock. We found that to be a fact in two of our buildings, and, um, we have vendors coming in from two companies to give us quotes, and we will have those changed so that, um, as the high school and middle school doors, a buzzer sounds to let you know to pull the door open, but as soon as that door closes, it locks. Nobody has to flip another switch, um, and so it takes the human element out of it that, you know, can cause a mistake and leave a door unlocked, and so, um, that had. And so that has been learned, and we're dealing with that. I think that's all, and I'll answer any questions about safety before I move on to some of the other items.
Questions? Concerns?
I have one.
Rhonda?
Barry, I'm going to just speak from a parent perspective right now. One of the things that I think I was disappointed in, and I don't know if that's the right term, but again, from a parent, was that I didn't know, there was no communication to me as a parent over the weekend of what the schools, how the schools were going to address it. And what happened, and I also heard this from parents also, that waking up on that Monday and not knowing with a six-year-old what is, what's going to happen as soon as they go in the school. And I think I'm a little bit more disappointed that one principal handled it one way and one the other. I'm glad that it wasn't addressed in my school, but, you know, that it was left up to each principal to decide how to address it. So I'm hearing that after that. But just in general, that as a parent, there was no communication from the district whatsoever in a robo-call, which happened in many, many districts, to tell me at least a little bit of information on what my child should expect when going into school on that day. And I think that it was, it was a lost opportunity to show leadership in that area. You know, an added bonus would be to use this as an opportunity to communicate what we have done, what we plan to do. And yes, I did get a communication in my child's backpack on the way home or after that first day, but it was that we just, there were so many opportunities over that weekend to do more when it came to communicating with parents, and we just didn't do it. And as a parent, that I think, I didn't realize the angst that I would feel until I woke up Monday morning, and I didn't know what to expect, what he was going to, what was going to happen in the school that day.
I hear your concern as a parent, and I don't want to debate the issue. So, thank you.
Ken?
Going forward, Dr. Rubenovich, do you still feel that the decisions should be left up to the principals? I sort of hear what Rhonda's saying, and I would like to see it be a consistency throughout, that each school handles it a certain way, handles it the same way. Because me personally, I wouldn't have been comfortable with the assembly part. And I know you heard both sides that some were, but I would hope that this is lessons learned, that maybe, I don't know if it's a policy or just a direction from the superintendent, that in crisis cases or anything like that, that everyone should handle it the same way, just my personal thought.
Through the chair. So anytime we have any of these kind of situations at our next administrative meeting, we will have a debrief about it and go through what we've heard this evening, as well as what letters have come in and phone calls that I've received. And we will discuss that and then change our procedures if necessary. And it, this is, hits all of us, I think, at different, different ways. And so, you know, we have to kind of, we go through it, we learn from it, but I do hear what you're saying.
One more, Mr. Chair. Will you have any dialogue or any suggestions maybe to the committee on how we might approach the police chief on, you know, I know in the budget crunch is the possibility of having two resource officers, because I know that's a touchy situation, but to me, that's money that if they say they don't have it in the police budget, is there a way we can find money? Because we're at the point now that something happens and the resource officer's at the high school, by the time he or she heads to east, west, or whatever, I think it's unfortunate that we're at this point. But we were talking about two resource officers prior to this tragedy. I think this just accelerates it.
I think something that we learn as a nation, not just as a school system, that from some of these tragedies, hopefully, the nation grows and learns some things. So I know that, and I don't want to get into a political thing about gun control, but, you know, I hope that there will be legislation coming about that. I'm hoping that the, from Washington, that maybe some grant funds will be made available to be used to enhance safety systems. The school, one of the things I did mention in my report was that I've asked each of the principals to come up with a list of things, of enhancements to their security systems, such as cameras and so forth and so on, that we will put together, and we'll be looking for grants to help pay for it. And if not, I may come to the committee and ask for an article at town meeting to pay for it, depending on the price. But to enhance it so that, you know, we have better, one of the schools, because of where the camera is, it's very dark. I know there's technology that would lighten that picture up, but I'm sure it was a cost thing when it was first put in. So there are enhancements that we will look to make, as well as paying for a second resource officer. So I've talked to Kyle about that, and I will be talking to the chief.
Thank you. Thank you. The only thing I would add is, I agree with my colleagues that although there was, I was probably watching the TV and reading almost too much over the last few days, there did seem to be a consistency in recommendations that the recommend, as to what to do was age-specific, so that with young children, it was one recommendation, and there was a tremendous amount of consistency. And the older they got, the more, the recommendations tended to change and get into more explanatory assemblies. But I think the larger issue is, security is an incredibly difficult thing, and it's a community that can enhance security. It's not just the schools. We can all do a great job in, a better job, I should say, in trying to make our community as secure as possible and still have it a fun place to learn and live. I've already had one conversation with a grandfather who I, and I greatly appreciate his telephone call, and I think his telephone call, it helped us understand a weakness. We've uncovered it, we're correcting it. I'm sure there are other things that we perhaps could do. Our superintendent has all the principals looking at it, but if you, as a parent, see something, observe something, experience something that you think deserves a recommendation with regard to school security, we would love to hear it. We hope we have the resources to act on anything that is reasonable, and if we think it's reasonable and we don't have the resources, we'll ask for them. So the bottom line is, security is critically important to all of us, and we need the whole community to be concerned about it. On the other hand, I can't overemphasize enough the fact that, as horrific as this experience was, schools are inherently a very safe place for our children. Thank goodness. And so, as much as we want to do everything possible to make them as safe as possible, we also have to recognize that they already are very safe places, and that's the balance. React appropriately, but recognize, and us children certainly need to hear that they're going to safe places every morning. Let's move on, please.
I'd just like to add a couple of things to what's been said here this evening. First of all, is I think that no one can guarantee the safety in our schools, no one can guarantee the safety on the subway, no one can guarantee safety walking down the street in Boston or Wareham or anywhere else. There's always that threat that, you know, there's going to be an evil person out there with evil intentions in his heart or her heart. But I think the bigger picture here is that we, as a society, have been so desensitized to violence that it has become almost epidemic. I think that we, as a society, have got to take a good, hard look at what we, what we accept as normal, everyday life, and the violence that's around us, and in some cases, the violence that is absolutely held to a high esteem, for lack of a better word, the video games, and it's just, it's just all around us. So I think that, as a community, not only do we, as a community members, but as parents and grandparents, you know, not only do we have to have conversations with our children to explain, to explain a tragedy like this kind and good. So I think it's a community effort, and I think that we, as a community, have got to start doing a better job about sensitizing our young people to the evil and the violence around us.
I couldn't agree more, and of course, that's what the Scotty Montero Foundation is all about, which is why their efforts are so important. Cindy, any thoughts on this difficult subject? Okay, I understand. A lot has already been said. Moving on to the Budget Advisory Committee.
I think, does any of more as your report?
That's the next one.
On Thursday, January 3rd, there'll be an all-day budget review with the Finance Committee and the Budget Advisory Committee. That has been posted as a school committee meeting. I ask any members of the school committee that can be there to please be there, because it's basically from 8:30 until 3:00 p.m. And I'm going to make a, try to make your day longer. I'd like you to stay for another hour after the presentation for a workshop regarding what you heard. We are currently at a million, $800,000 approximately, over what has been appropriated by the town. And so we need to have a conversation about, you know, what is to be presented on January 9th, which is the public hearing when the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Finance Committee.
Just to be clear on that million, you said a million eight?
Million eight.
So the number that you put in your memo to the town administrator of 27, 275, 389 for net school spending is a million eight more than what?
Than what the town administrator, at his first crack at his budget, has put in.
So it has nothing to do with last year? This is a disparity between you and the town administrator at the moment?
At what he feels he can afford. The Budget Advisory Committee, I gave them copies, and I would make available to the other school committee members, the, I believe he calls it, his budget message from the town administrator to the Board of Selectmen, and his budget. So I will, for the members that didn't get it this evening, I'll make copies of that.
Yeah, Michelle, could you send that out to all of us electronically? Thank you.
And so that's where the comparison came. I got that actually today. Michelle had to go upstairs and get it for me. And this evening, we had a meeting with the Budget Advisory. You know, we've all looked at the numbers once, the principals have come forward, we've had the numbers to look. But I'm hoping, as principals present again and say why they need what they need, what I would ask any board member to do is to hear, if there's anything there that you can't support as we move forward, I need to know, and I need to have the school committee's direction before the 9th, when we're going to, when I'm going to present it to the public. You know, and that's the chance. So since it's going to, you know, everybody that can be there can be there.
Is there other documentation that could be sent?
Yes.
That would give backup to that number as well before the 3rd?
I can scan in the rest of the document and try to send it.
And just to be clear, the number that you gave to the town administrator, he also published that number, correct?
He has, he just got that. His was already put together before he got mine.
But didn't we give him a number by the 15th?
Actually, he got it on the 17th. And his thing actually was done in the morning of the 15th, so I didn't have time to get it up there. I didn't have, the 15th, actually, I believe, was a Saturday. So, you know, it came to him on Tuesday morning.
Okay.
So I will get you that information.
Barry, just, I had conflicting dates. Is it the 9th or the 16th for their joint meeting? I asked last time, and we had two different dates.
I'm sorry, you are right. It is the 6th, on Wednesday, January 16th, there is a public hearing where all the boards are at. The 9th is a school committee meeting that we have the public hearing on two other issues that I'll be bringing up shortly.
And then the 3rd is the, is the
All-day budget review.
Review meeting.
Right, so.
The 16th is the joint meeting, though, right?
Yep, that's what I wanted to call it.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Update on Wareham High School roof. Very good news. We did our bid. We had it looked at by the town attorney. Michelle put it into the, it's not Goods and Services, but because it's in construction, the Central Register for Construction Jobs. We had over, I believe we had 10 bids come in, and they ranged from $107,000 down to the low bid that was awarded last night by the Board of Selectmen of $64,300. So it came in low, and what our roofing consultant that helped put together the specifications said, because it's the end of the construction season, some people had room on their schedule and still had a workforce, so they were hungrier for the work at this particular time than they might have if we had done it in the spring or the summer. So the timing just happened to work for us.
We'll take it.
So that was accepted. We, the attorney is looking at the contract on Thursday, and we hope to have it signed. And there's a preliminary schedule that we hope that during vacation week, the tons of rocks that sit on top of a high school roof will be removed when the students are not there and so the learning can continue. So that, that's when we hope to get that started, and it should be done within a week after that. It's a relatively fast job.
Just one comment. That's a great lesson for these kinds of jobs in general, that looking at, over Christmas break, what are the, what are the construction-type activities that we can do if this is normal towards the end of the year?
The issue is that this is, the funding was available because of town meeting in October, where normally, when we have identified funds to do a project, it's before the end of the fiscal year, which is probably not the best time to do them, but it's when we know, for instance, we've had an easier heating season, and I might be able to come to the board and say, I've got $30,000 left from heating, and I want to do this project. So then you have to award it, and now you're in the middle of the summer. Because it took three weeks? I mean, it has to be in the register for two weeks. And I don't know if it's on here or not, but for transportation, for instance, the Action Committee, we bid this week, we put into the Goods and Services bulletin, the RFP with the four scenarios. So that was placed in, and it's going to be there for two weeks, and because of the holidays, you know, when you open it and you have your pre-bid meeting and so forth. So it takes about three weeks with these things. But by all means, you know, it is. And perhaps, in the future, the committee may decide that to get the entire roof done, instead of going after all of it, which is a million-dollar job, to maybe do it in four segments and to try to get, you know, a bid that's more reasonable. So just a suggestion. Public hearings for January 9th. I've put down two, so the first one is about the grade configuration. My intention is to divide My intention is to divide this into five separate parts. The first part would be the elementary principals talking about their need, why they think fifth grade should move, and they will talk about the lack of space in their buildings. They will talk about portable classrooms that are 20 years old and will identify the need. The second part would be Mr. Gilmore, the principal of the middle school, to talk about that there is space in this building, that there are available classrooms that could be used and to talk about a, call it a draft plan for where the fifth grade would be located and how they would be near sixth grade, not near any seventh and eighth graders. They would have their own lavatories, they would have their own lunchtime and that the curriculum, the teachers would be the same as they currently have, it would just be located in a different place. Third part would be to have Mrs. Rotella and Mr. Gilmore describe examples of current five through eight middle schools. Mrs. Rotella designed and opened a five through eight middle school in Charlton, Mass. and was the principal of that facility. And Mr. Gilmore was the principal of a five through eight middle school in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. And he will talk about that experience. The next part, my thought would be to have parents give their comments and ask questions, talk about their concerns, then to have the school committee ask their questions and their concerns and to, you know, we'll answer as many of them as we can, not looking for a vote yet, but just trying to lay out the possibilities and to hear what the issues are so that we can then go to see how we might be able to resolve some issues that come up that we haven't thought about yet, concerns. The second public hearing would be about transportation services. I've just mentioned about the RFP. The RFP has full levels of service. And the reason for the RFP and the chairman can correct me because he's the chairman of the Action Committee, but is to basically come up with what the cost is from an outside vendor of different levels of services and to compare that with what our own in-house transportation group can do it at. And then for the committee to have a conversation after hearing from parents about their concerns and so forth, about what level of service is the board willing to support and to tell us to, to move forward with. So those are my remarks and Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, to the chair. Now that we're on the RFP, I just, I wanted to get a sense with the Action Committee. The members are yourself, Dr. Rubinovich, Ms. Begley from the Board of Selectmen and someone from Capitol Planning.
Mr. Heath.
Mr. Heath. Is there, is there consensus-
Plus the town administrator.
Yes, yes. Is there consensus among the group that what's being put out for the RFP is an apples-to-apples comparison of what we have now?
Yeah, well, I'm not sure what you mean by apples-to-apples because it's, it, the comparisons will be when they're made, apples-to-apples. But there, there are four scenarios. The current setup-
The status quo scenario, for example.
The status quo scenario, we will have a status quo RFP response. We have not yet developed unless the superintendent corrects me, I'm not aware of whether Mr. Tatro has actually developed an apples-to-apples comparison for the other three, but I suspect it's a relatively easy exercise and he will be doing that.
So there is consensus, would you say, for the status quo option? You know, if, if what we're asking for is very similar to what we're doing now as far as-
Identical.
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 Identical. And everyone on the committee agrees with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because we would not have approved the RFP if we were going to get back an orange when we're doing an apple.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that you-
Yes.
Absolutely. Because that always comes up.
I think the difficult problem for the Action Committee and perhaps for this committee and the public hearing as well, will be, once we've established what the most cost-effective way is to provide one kind of apple and another kind of identical service, private or public, if you will, can we afford it?
Right, oh absolutely, yes.
And if we can't afford it, what kind of option, what options exist that we can afford?
Well, right, and I guess we're, the hope this time around is that things are more competitive and what have you. I, I, I know, I know the last time around, there were all sorts of ways of getting to apples-to-apples, but I guess we're starting at apples-to-apples this time around.
I certainly hope so.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that's the belief on the part of the committee, I can assure you of that.
Okay, good. That's almost the entire committee is in agreement on that.
Yes. The level of service will be the, will be the difficult thing to achieve consensus, but I think we have consensus that the RFP is going to give us information to make an apples-to-apples comparison.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Just not, not to prolong the conversation, but Mike's talking one terminology, you're talking another.
I hope not.
No, you are.
Okay.
Because it's a big difference between consensus and agreement. He's talking about total agreement, you're talking about consensus. They don't necessarily have to equate.
Right, but he clarified.
Okay? So do you have full agreement or do you have consensus?
We have full, 100% agreement-
Okay, good.
-that the RFP will allow us to do an apples-to-apples comparison between private and public.
Right.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We're still on the superintendent's report, correct?
Yes.
Going back just to the first piece, I would just, I mean, I would just like to make a recommendation, superintendent can take it or leave it, but the, what he went through today on what was done, I think it would be great if we could get that up on the website. I know that he said it today, we don't know how many parents are actually listening, so if there's a way that we can have communication on the website from a district level of what has been done and what we are doing, I would really appreciate that.
Summary, a summary of activities-
What was reported tonight.
That have taken place and will be taking place. Okay.
I think it's important information.
Okay. Mike?
While we're still on the superintendent's report, I apologize, I was a little bit remiss during the, during the budget policy discussion. I just wanted to, to thank and commend the superintendent for his work on that. It started off pretty heated and it ended up, I mean, what, what he presented, it was mostly 95% from him and it came out better than I expected, honestly. So, so I commend him on that. Also, I think appropriately, while we're still on superintendent's report, this is from beyond school time, I believe?
Yes.
Is that Mr. Luzon?
Yes.
This is very impressive. I, I learned a lot about what's going on with beyond school time and I'm, I'm happy to see what's going on there. I'm, I'm really impressed with the STEAM initiative over there at Statdicas. Now, now was that something that was, that was thought about, that was discussed when you mentioned it? Or is that something that came out of, like Rhonda and I saying, listen, it'd be great to have some, you know, fee-based after-school services? Is this what kind of offshoot of that or?
It is. It came from a questionnaire as well. It was a questionnaire to see whether they have interest.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna try to take advantage of that. Okay. And I just wanted to touch base on the, the five page or two. And I wanted to-
Can, can that hold until we get to financial reports?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that I think since both of the public hearings, in a major way in one case, but in a minor way involve transportation, I think it'd be great to have Mr. Tatro there because I know some people have concerns about the transportation of fifth graders to the middle school.
Yes, so we'll, we'll ask Mr. Tatro as well as the Administrator's Board president.
Great, thank you. Acceptance of gifts.
I recommend that we accept the following monetary donations. Three hundred and seventy-five dollars to the East Wareham School from Central State's Used Clothing, Inc. The school collected 3,000 pounds of clothing for the back-to-school fundraising program.
Wow. Yes. Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0?
And I recommend the acceptance of $7,000 to the Wareham High School Multimedia Center from the Gateway Restaurant and Joe Sorrow. This donation was raised through their annual golf tournament held on October 14th and will be utilized for technology in the Wareham High School library.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is not the first of, this is-
This has been going on at least-
This is third year.
The third year, yeah, I was gonna say at least two, if not three.
We have lots of helpers.
This is, this is a, a great event and much appreciated. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0? Thank you very much. Financial reports.
Okay, in your package that-
By the way, we would be remiss if we didn't give you a, a minor status report on, on Ms. Miranda.
Okay. Ms. Miranda weathered her first hip replacement very well and so well, in fact, that they scheduled her second run and she's had her second hip replaced as of last Wednesday, I believe. And she sent a card to the office telling us to expect to see her in January. So she is recovering at a very quick rate and Mr. Fauntz will appreciate this because Mrs. Miranda told me that the reason she's recovering so fast is because of the great Cape Verdean food that her mom feeds her.
So does that deserve a hip hip parade? Actually, I, I did forget under good news that I went to the-
Oh.
I went to the West Wareham Academy Coffee Hour and had a good time judging the doors that were appropriately displayed for the, for the, for the holidays, but I was pleasantly surprised that they were selling a cookbook. And I'm here to say that Mr. Luzon's slow-cooked jambalaya was a great, was a great success in my house. Moving along, financial reports.
Okay. So we have the five-page report that have all of the functions that we currently use and if you look at page 5 of 5 and you look at the bottom line, last year, we had 65.8% remaining at this time and this year, we have 64.86%. So it's approximately 1% difference and given that the total is 26,737, so that's 267,000 dollars less than what we had at this time. But knowing that we wound up with funds that we were able to pre-buy textbooks and other things well above that number, I feel comfortable in telling you that we are on, it is a tighter budget than last year, but if the heat holds out the way it's been going, we should be fine. And, you know, every month, you know, we look at this and we take the pulse of it in the various accounts. And the teacher line item, which is the largest account with 12,56,000 dollars in it, last year, we had 72.9%. This year, we have 73%. It's only like a tenth of a percent more, but it's in the right direction. And since that is the largest account, I'm hoping we'll, we're doing fine. So I'll answer any specifics about this before I move on to the other ones.
Is, is the, the money from McKinney-Vento represented in here?
Yes, it is.
Where?
Okay. So if you go to the 3,300, I think, pupil transportation-
Yes.
So that 1,476,287 represents the additional McKinney-Vento money that was added to that account after the new appropriation. Because it was a million, I don't know, 350 something before.
Should there be that amount in the transfer column?
Wasn't a transfer.
Wasn't a transfer.
It was an appropriation.
All right, I thought when we, all right, I thought when we agreed, we voted on that, it was, you know, it was specifically going to that account.
And it did.
And it did, it did, I just don't see that it did, that's all.
When, on your other budget numbers that you have those sheets, if you look, find the, where transportation is as a line, as a site, you will find that that money is there. You'll see, we added it actually as an additional account to show it under, I think we called it McKinney-Vento.
And is, is that likewise with the Chapter 70 money that we got?
That is also in this budget, yes.
But you won't see it in the transfer column?
But, no, because it went into the various salary line items where we hired teachers back that we voted to do.
Yeah.
But the, just to be clear, so it literally gets added to the, well, the first numbers column?
Correct.
Yes, yeah, yes. So I guess if we had looked at a previous one for a couple of months ago-
It would be, it would be different.
...be off by that much.
Yes.
That we voted on. And just, just out of curiosity, I guess now, had, had the budget policy we just agreed on been in place, like what, how would that have impacted you in, in, in what we have today?
In this particular one, I don't think it would have because it was a town meeting vote to increase our appropriation.
Overall, I'm seeing a lot of transfers.
Oh.
So you would have had to come to us for like all the ones over $5,000?
Yes. And in fact, I don't believe I've done any except for ones that were within the same number. So like salary line items where we might have moved Hammond teacher salary to minor teacher salary, it's the same four-digit number, so that wouldn't require us coming.
Okay. I was just curious, thanks.
All set?
Yeah, for now.
Financial reports.
Well, the, the second part of the financial report, okay.
Before we get to the revolver, any, any questions on the, on the main body of this As long as we're on 3,300, are you comfortable, if I'm reading the, that's 51.9% remaining?
It was, last year at this time, we had 51.9.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so it's 57.
This year, 57.46.
So-
So we're in better shape because of McKinney-Vento.
Yes, exactly. So my question is, knowing McKinney-Vento is there, how comfortable are you in general with this account?
I am comfortable to say to you, there will be no deficit using the 200,000 anticipated from the revolver.
That's, that's better than last year. Okay, and finally, I just wanted to commend you and your management team. We're, we're doing better on substitutes this year than last year and that's with a slightly lower budget.
Correct.
Is there any, is there any particular reason for that?
I'm afraid not.
Less illness?
Perhaps less illness, less maternity at this point. I mean, there are a number of things that have affected.
Thank you. Revolver?
What stood out to me, and you know, we all have different eyes and lenses when we look at this, under school property, I wanted to know why, you know, we were, in October, we had 24, almost 25,000 dollars and we're in the hole, 2,0795.
Could you address, by the way, the generic issue of how, how you can be in the hole?
It's because it's all basically-
One pool of money.
It, it is one pool of money.
What is one pool of money?
All the revolvers are held by the town. And even though the accounting, we know exactly how much is that particular revolver, but it's not, it's not its own bank account.
But it's its own financial account, isn't it?
For accounting purposes.
Yeah.
I believe there is one because we had an issue recently that brought this to my attention, but-
It sounds like I should probably withdraw my concern because I'd be getting into something that is more town-related than school-related?
That is correct.
Okay, moving right along.
So, for instance, we had, I don't know if the committee, I think, believe the committee, I gave them a report about- I gave them a report about during the summer, after July first, we had an issue with mold in a gymnasium, um...
That was mine at first, right?
That is correct. And so, um, that was a large job. I, I wanna say somewhere between fourteen and eighteen thousand dollars. It came out of this account. We had another issue at another school that was above four thousand with the same issue about, um, moisture causing mold. So, um, and, um, I needed a place to pay the roofing consultant to write the specs so that we could get the roof done quickly. That was also taken from this account, that was about two thousand dollars. Um, the, the other part of this is that, so, when we have organizations, Kenny stepped out, but, um, like JBA, that used the building on a day, um, we have a custodian, let's say, on a Saturday. We pay the custodian out of this account their overtime rate. At a later time, we get paid back by JBA when they get the bill and there could be a month or two in between invoicing and getting paid. So, I know that the money is there, it's just, it's, we're having a cash flow in this particular account.
Is it fair to say all of these accounts are cash accounts, not accrual accounts?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that...
Yes.
All right, good. So, that, that's in that particular one, 'cause I wanted to fi- find out why the big change in that one. Um, in, uh, the GIFT, uh, G E D, and, and I don't know why that's in the gift account, to be honest, but, and I didn't find that out, but I know that the G E D program, um, there was a grant submitted that usually pays the testing costs and so forth and, um, that, we haven't received that yet. That will flush that account out, um, through the end of the year. At this point, I'll answer any questions anybody has about any of the other accounts on this.
Mike, Rhonda?
Yep.
Uh, thank you, Cliff. Um, I don't wanna belabor it, but I just wanna make a statement. You and I both know that these accounts by law cannot co-mingle.
Correct.
So, I hope you will impress upon the accounting department at the town that we would like to have a comfort level that they are in fact being accounted for in a non-co-mingling fashion.
Yes, we'll have to have a, um, a conversation with the definition of co-mingling for me at a later date, um...
Alongside fungible.
Yeah, right alongside fungible, okay. Enough said.
Probably the opposite of fungible.
Okay. Um, I guess we can, we can move on to the, um...
Ethics.
Ethics. Um, this is a, and Michelle, I'm sure will correct me if I state this incorrectly. Um, every two years, we have to actually go online and do the test. And if you complete the test, which is not a trivial matter, uh, because it's seventy-nine pages long, um, you will get a certificate that looks like this. Okay? Um, and Michelle, I actually passed mine into the town clerk. I didn't realize I could actually just hand it to you and you would collect it. So, um, I'm pretty certain that I hadn't, didn't do it last year. Um, and so, I would remind everybody that you really are required, even though you don't think of yourself as a municipal employee, by state definition, a municipal employee, because you're an elected official, you still must do this. So, if you would go online to the website that I indicated, and I think Barry indicated in his report as well, um, and produce this certificate and, um, print it out and give it to either to Michelle or to, uh, or to the town clerk, that would put us in compliance. In addition, on an annual basis, um, there is a statement that says you acknowledge receipt of the, the law. I'll pass this down to, uh, Michelle and I have blank copies that I will give to everybody um, so that you can just fill them out with basically, that your name and saying you've received it and if you would give that back to Michelle, that would also put us in compliance. Did I say anything incorrect, Michelle?
No.
Okay, so, that's basically it, but, but you are gonna have to carve out a little time to do this seventy-nine-page, um, online, um, test assessment course um, because, uh, it's, it's not something you can quickly do. Any, any questions on that?
This has to be done by when?
Um, technically, it has to be done by January, I saw a date recently, middle of January?
Um, April.
Oh, I'm wrong.
For the online testing.
Oh, you're right. The online test, test is...
This one needs to be done soon.
The, the form now would be good.
Okay.
Um, and the test is, you're right, it's April something. So, you've got several months to do.
And it's how many pages? Don't say seventy-nine.
I, look, when I looked at the bottom of the screen and I saw you've just completed three out of seventy-nine, all of a sudden, my planning for that moment in my time changed. So, yeah, I literally minimized it several times, 'cause I didn't have that much time to devote at one single sitting. So, yeah, it's seventy-nine pages and interspersed throughout the seventy-nine pages are quizzes to make sure you've actually read it and simply haven't zipped through the seventy-nine pages.
So, it says employee, but does that mean that we were considered an employee?
By the definition under this conflict of interest law, we are employees.
Okay.
So, any, any questions on this? Ken, I don't know if you saw this certificate, you've got until April to do this course, online course, and it will produce this certificate and you can either give it to Mary Ann or, or to Michelle.
You need this back now?
Now would be good, yes. And the actual law was included in your packet? If there's no question on that, we'll move to, um, the superintendent's search. Um, the first, um, the first item on, to be considered is whether we want a search committee. And I'm just looking for consensus, doesn't have to be total agreement, that I'll look for consensus.
You're probably not gonna get total agreement on any of this.
Exactly.
That's okay.
Exactly. So, do I, do I have any, um, thoughts that people would like to express with, with respect to whether we want to have a search committee, uh, which by, I'm using that to mean a, a group of representatives of the education community, including members of the, uh, general community, um, in, on a committee, uh, to assist us in the search for a new superintendent, starting August first. Any thoughts, comments, questions? We've traditionally had one, but we are not restricted by tradition. Yes?
I think we need to have a search committee. Now, the composition of the search committee is certainly up in the air as far as I'm concerned, but not to go with the search committee uh, is not to be, um, is to lay the foundation for, um, all kinds of innuendos and accusations and, um, non-transparency and you can, you can throw a whole lot of different things in there. So, yes, I think we do need a search committee, there's no question about that, that's just my opinion. Uh, the composition of the search committee, well, I mean, we can talk about that, but I definitely think we need a search committee, that's my opinion.
And you, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, you know, I agree, I mean, uh, in a long way, uh, Dr. Sylvia, is that what I wanna say? I just think it would be irresponsible if we didn't, you know?
Is there anybody who feels we shouldn't have one? Okay, so we've agreed that we'll have a search committee. My, my own feelings, this could be different, that we really ought to have a chair on the search committee and my recommendation is that that be one of us. Um, does anybody feel, uh, I can tell you that the town administrator's search, um, the chair happened to be someone who wasn't a member of the Board of Selectmen. Um, but my own feelings are that, uh, it probably ought to be one of us. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Yes, Cliff?
I, I, I tend to agree with the Board of Selectmen for once in my life.
That duly noted.
I'll tell you why. It's that air of transparency, the air of, if you have somebody on the school committee as the chair of the search committee, you ha- always open the door that can have people say that the school committee was in a position to put undue influence on the search, search committee. So, I think by having someone not affiliated, uh, with the school committee as a search, uh, chairman of the search committee and how that person is determined, well, that's another discussion. But I honestly feel that probably in terms of full disclosure and not opening the door to any criticisms, uh, and not being accused of being a biased organization, I think that we should have a neutral person as the chair, that's just my opinion.
Any other thoughts on that issue?
I agree with Cliff. I think that it's important to be able to have, um, just an independent body outside of this chair of the committee, but making sure that there is proper representation of this committee on that, on that committee.
Any other thoughts?
Could, could I just ask, what, what is your definition of proper representation? I got ideas on that too.
You're asking Rhonda?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would say two members.
See, I would say one, and I'll tell you why later.
Well, I think that it depends on the, how, how large the committee is.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Okay, so, I'm sensing so far, building towards a consensus, the chair would not be, uh, from this body. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? I must confess, I may have been influenced by the fact that I was the chair of the, of the Town Administrator's Search Committee and in the end, the process was fruitless and, and I almost felt like maybe it would've been better if one of their own had been the chair and they actually could've produced, the committee could've produced someone that they actually wanted to consider. But in the end, I don't feel strongly about it and I sense that no one else feels that Cliff and Rhonda are, don't represent us, so, fine. So, we, so we...
I think we're all capable of doing them.
Well, let's, let's, if we don't make that decision, then we'll leave it up to the committee and that still means that person, someone on this committee could be, end up being chairman.
If in fact, i- if in fact, the search committee is going to pick their own chair.
Exactly.
Right.
Which is essentially what you're saying.
No, I didn't say that. I just said we should, we, we should not have a mem- we should not plan to have a member of the school committee as chair. If, if you're, if you're, if your intent is, or if it's our intent, I should say, because it really does have to be our intent.
Correct.
If it is our intent, um, that the chair of the search committee be selected by the search committee, then you don't know who it's gonna be.
That's correct.
Right.
Um, but maybe we ought to continue that, that thought.
But I'm not saying it has to be that way.
Um, I was making the assumption that the committee would then choose a chair. Is it, is it the, is it, well, I'll ask you, Cliff, is, is it your, from your recommendation, are you suggesting that or are you suggesting we pick a position, um, and say that person would be the chair?
In terms of objectivity and public perception, it probably would be better if the committee chose their own chair. But, but you always run the risk that there is a risk that it might not be as productive as it possibly could be.
Exactly.
So, uh, that's the risk. If, if we appoint a chair, uh, if we did, if we determine the, uh, the composition of the committee and we appoint a chair, um, then we, we, we have had some outside control as to who is going to moderate the meetings, uh, but yet, it was our control and it wasn't the control of the committee. So, you know, it's, 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 it's a flip of the, a flip of the coin.
Okay, any other thoughts on the chair of this search committee, since we've now decided we are going to have one? Okay, um, I, I, I do think we need to make a determination as a committee as to how the chair is going to be chosen. I don't think we should leave that, that specific issue up. Do, does anybody wanna make a motion with respect to how the chair will be chosen?
Before we make a motion, can we talk about the composition of the committee? Because if we talk about the composition of the committee, maybe that'll give some insight as to how we pick the chair.
I'm perfectly willing to do that, fine. Okay, let's move on to the composition of the committee. And obviously, that not only includes, uh, what positions, uh, within the community, it might theoretically, uh, include what, specific people and it certainly includes the number of people on the committee. I, I can tell you, I've been involved in this process twice and there have been times when it was a very large committee. So, any thoughts that people would like to share to start the discussion of composition?
I'm gonna defer to, a lot to you folks who have been here for a while, when it comes to that.
Can, a- any idea on the, the size of the committee on the last search that...
Um, um, let's see, I was on the search committee that chose Dr. Collins. I was not on the search committee.
Were you a committee member then?
Yes. No, I wasn't.
No, you weren't.
I wasn't. I was on the search committee representing somebody, maybe.
Good of the FinCom.
I think I was probably representing the FinCom. And I think there were about two dozen people. I mean, it was a large committee. Uh, my own sense after experiencing was, it was too many. So, uh, maybe the, the, maybe the way to get into the size would be to back into, to it by saying, who do we want to be represented and to what extent? Uh, for example, and Michelle, I, I ask you to take careful notes of, of this conversation so we know where we are by the time we finish. Um, it seems to me, the, the first order of business is parents. I mean, we represent the parents, but I know there are lots of parents who feel very connected to this process. So, how many parents do we think there should be on this committee? Ken?
I would say at least one parent from each school that we have in the system.
Okay. And then there are two, there's the East School and the West School, so...
Six?
And, excuse me, and the Cooperative. So, technically, there are seven. Uh, my own feeling is that's, you could probably consolidate that a little, uh, but my, my, when I was thinking about this for the last couple of weeks, I was thinking we certainly ought to have one parent from each of the four major schools and then, and certainly a parent that represents the special education community, 'cause that's twenty percent of our students. And then after that, I, I think we'd probably be pretty well represented with five parents, but that was my own thinking.
Well, yeah, on the same lines as, if you were looking to reduce it, you, you could do maybe four. High school, middle, somebody represents elementary and then...
And sped.
Co-op and west, so...
So, can we agree on a, does everybody feel the sped community should be represented?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, are we, can, do we agree then it should be?
Well, yeah, okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm looking for a number. It looks like it's either gonna be four or five, am I...
Well, I don't have a problem with the number, but I, I would like to know, um, particularly where special education runs K through twelve, how, how would this person get selected? Uh, you know, I, I, I... See, that's where we run into some problems, because, you know, you've got sped, you've got special ed, uh, parents running the gamut from K to twelve, uh, how do we just select that one parent's gonna represent all sped, the whole, the entire sped community? Is there an advisory committee that we can draw from? I mean, that would be a central, uh, group that we could, you know, draw from. That I would have, not have a problem, but just an open-ended, we're gonna have one sped parent, I, I don't know how you would choose that person.
Right, I think when you actually get a, can we agree on the composition and then move to that issue?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, can, uh, is there a consensus around the number, like, four parents, five parents?
I, I think five's appropriate.
Do, can we agree on five?
I think we can agree on five. The only question that I would have is going back to Kenny's point, which is, do you have just one from the elementary and maybe, since it is twenty percent of our population because of the range of special needs is from here to here, do you do two sped, one, so one elementary, one middle, one high and two sped?
I agree. I, I like that.
Okay, what I'm hearing is at least two votes for one elementary, one middle, one high, two sped. Is that what, did I remember correctly? Are we in, are we in agreement? Mike, does that work for you?
Yes.
Cliff, does that work for you?
Yeah, it works, uh, yeah. It worked, it's fine.
I don't feel strongly enough to...
I don't either.
You know, okay, so we've got now five. I'm just thinking the public, this is like ma- making sausage, you know? But that's what democracy and committee deliberations are all about. Okay, so we've got five parents. Now, there are...
Cliff, did you have something?
No.
You sure, okay.
Okay, now we have...
Well, I've got quite a few things I wanna with, to come up with.
Yeah, now we have a lot of members of, with whom the superintendent would interact. And they are important members of the community. My own initial thoughts over the last couple of weeks is we, we ought to have a FinCom representative, we ought to have a Board of Selectmen representative, we ought to have, um, the teachers' union represented, um, as a, as a critical person who represents the employees. Uh, let me stop there. Does anybody disagree that those three bodies should be represented?
I'm not sure. And I wanna... And I want to.
Go ahead.
And again, I just think that I absolutely understand your motivation in getting this thing done, and getting it done expeditiously. It's something that we have to do, because we're all going to be in the hunt to get a replacement. But the one area that I don't agree with is the fact that in your enthusiasm, you've rung a bell, it's going to be very hard for us to unring.
Well, just to be clear, I rang it, nobody else did.
I know.
So, nobody else is responsible.
No, I understand that, but it's still going to be very difficult to unring it. You've already asked for representation from the Board of Selectmen, you've already asked representation from the FinCom.
If the committee's so chilled to have them represented.
But that's what I'm saying, though. But it's going to be very hard now if we decide, well, we don't want you to unring that bell. So, I think that those conversations should have been done at this level first.
I understand that, but I viewed it as administrative, and I knew perfectly well this committee has a mind of its own, and it could unring the bell.
I, fortunately, I agree. I think that the superintendent probably will have direct discussions with the town administrator, certainly with the FinCom. We don't have, per se, direct conversations with the Board of Selectmen. But, you know, protocol is protocol. You know, I don't have an opinion one way or the other on that. But certainly, the people that he is going to be dealing with, I remember that when Dr. Rubenovich.
Or she.
Or she. Thank you, Kenny. He or she are going to be dealing with. I know when Dr. Rubenovich, his committee, we had the town treasurer on it, if I remember correctly. So, yeah, I think we need to have people that he, he or she are going to be dealing with almost on a daily basis, in terms of the operation of the school department.
My own feeling about Board of Selectmen versus town administrator, just to be clear, was, I think we should try to avoid having people on the committee where one person is reporting to the other. In meaning, if you, and the town, so.
The superintendent doesn't deal with the Board of Selectmen. The superintendent deals exclusively with the town administrator.
But the Board of Selectmen have a huge impact.
I understand.
On the allocation of resources in this town.
Oh, I understand.
And that's the reason I thought they should be represented, just as they wanted the school committee.
Yeah, but this isn't about resources, this is about picking a superintendent.
Oh, no, no, I understand. But I think Barry would tell you that resources is almost like the number two issue for him on a routine basis. So, and I also felt that we should reciprocate, since they wanted a member of the school committee to choose their chief executive, I thought it would be appropriate for us to ask them to have.
They didn't ask me. Who'd they ask?
They asked the school committee chair.
Oh.
Okay. So, I'm not sure I hear consensus. I'd like to hear from other members. Ken?
First of all, are we going to set a number that, for the size of this committee? Because when you said 22 at the last one, I would hope that we don't exceed 11.
I would agree with that.
22, stupid.
Right.
I would agree with that.
So, I think before we start saying a member of the FinCom or this one, right now, based on what we said with the parents, that if we agreed on 11, that leaves us with six.
Correct.
Six positions to fill. And I don't know.
Those six don't have to come from individuals.
Right.
Right.
But I don't know what the policy is, or how the superintendent feels, if the superintendent, the retiring superintendent, is part of that process.
I invited our superintendent to be a part of the process, and he declined.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that offer was out there.
He was.
Okay. So, should we agree on a number?
Well, the one comment that I would make, that I think that this first round, the way that I would feel comfortable is, let's throw out members that would be appropriate to be on a committee. And then, once we take a look at it, then we can basically say, what number do we have? And then, because the, going back, if I'm taking a look at that, and all of a sudden, I'm making, I hear a very, very strong debate on the Board of Selectmen or FinCom or something like that, then I would say, you know what, that is more important for this selection process than X, whether, you know, an additional parent or something like that. So I want to put the feelings of all the committee members of what type of members should be on it, and then we can kind of take a look and debate it and whittle it down. But I agree with you, can't be 22, it can't be five. You know, it's somewhere between.
Okay. Let me see if, let me see if I can expedite this. By position, how many members feel that the Board of Selectmen should be represented?
You want to raise a hand?
Yeah. We don't need to have a motion. One, two. I do, so that's three. So, Board of Selectmen gets represented. How many people feel the FinCom should be represented? That's a majority. So that's the FinCom. How many people feel the WEA president or the WEA should be represented?
Well, can I, can I talk about that?
Sure.
I think the WEA ought to be represented, but I don't think it should be represented by one person, because if you're going to have four or five parents on here, certainly, I would think that you'd want to have more than one teacher.
I respect your feelings. I don't agree, but I respect your feelings.
Because I just think in terms of parity, if you're going to have three town, if you're going to have Selectmen, FinCom, who else would we decide? Five parents, two sped parents, and you're going to have one teacher? I don't think that that's parity, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for that.
How about if you get a teacher that's a parent?
Depends on what hat they want to wear. And the other thing is, in terms of teachers, I also include administrators. I think we need building administrators on that committee.
Okay, we.
So.
We can get to all that, but can we just, there's no question from an employee perspective that the WEA president is, I think, the most important member of the employee representatives, certainly in terms of numbers, positions, et cetera. Maybe I won't get a consensus on a.
He's a teacher.
Of course he's, yes, absolutely. But my point is, I'm just looking for a majority on that, on that institution.
Fine, you got it.
Okay. So, how many people support the WEA president or his designee to be on the committee? Okay, that's a majority. So that's, Michelle, you keeping track? We have, we have, yes, on that. Okay. Let's, before we get to other employees of the system, can we talk about whether the students should be represented?
One or two juniors.
One or two juniors. Okay. How many people agree that students should be represented? I got one. Mike, you're not sure? Okay, I, you're, that's one. Cliff is one. Ken, you don't support it. I do. So that's three for students. Okay. So, now, Cliff, you said one or two?
I'm comfortable with one, as long as their voice is heard. Do you feel strongly about two, one or two?
I think this is where we get into what Kenny's talking about, which is the makeup of the committee, and how many members we actually want on it. Because this is where, one, where I might be swayed, based on the conversation, that I would say, all right, well, the, it's much, it's much more important to have this represented than that represented. So I think that we should, again, just put the bodies on there instead of saying one or two.
I agree.
Because it's the same thing with the, with the parents.
So, we'll say one for the moment, and it can be expanded.
About saying two for the moment.
Well, the only reason I.
You can shrink it down.
The only, okay, two for the moment. Okay.
We're up to 21.
I hope not.
Never not.
Okay. So we have two students represented. Now.
School administration?
If, we will get to that. I promise. Community representatives, in other words, people not parents and not from the employment, people who are employed in the schools. Yes? Ken?
Based on the working relationship, someone from the police department should be on this committee. The police work hand in hand with the superintendent on all issues in the schools, and I think that's important going forward.
Okay. So I'm hearing one, and specifically from the police department. Any other thoughts on community-based individuals?
I don't know if it would be an additional one, but maybe an at-large community person.
That's what we're talking about.
Not specific to, yeah, at least one more, yeah, community.
In addition to the police? Or?
Yeah, I would rather just say two, but if you want to be specific and say police, then.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think it's important to have people that are involved in the youth, that they're not with the school department, but they're involved with, you know, our youth.
Well, one of the things that I feel very strongly about is the, having a representation of the partnership, the school partnership groups, like the YMCA or the Boys and Girls Club.
That's where I was going, yeah.
Right, and that's.
I'll vote for that, rather than somebody at random. I would vote for that as a community person. Someone that, someone that is affiliated with an organization that work hand in hand with the school committee, like the YMCA or whatever the case may be. Yeah.
For someone like that, who would solicit that? Who would?
Well, as you know, I've been reaching out in an administrative, non-committed basis, and I know the YMCA would be glad to be represented on the committee if that's the committee's decision.
I'm not opposed to that.
Do I have three votes for someone from the YMCA?
Specifically from the YMCA?
Yes.
Can we just leave that one open?
All right, we'll leave it open.
Because I would lean to the Boys and Girls Club that, that has after-school programs, that they work directly with the schools where the YMCA is just everyone.
They're across the street.
Right.
No, I don't care who it is, but I mean, I don't think it should come from someone that has a partnership with the school, as opposed to somebody at random.
Right. And from a community member perspective, I put it into two categories. One, that can help provide services to our kids. Okay, so that's the body that I would want represented on there. And then the other one is a community group or a company that can provide resources. So, meaning, you know, whether it's a company or a major player in helping us provide resources to the school, would be the other type of partner that I think is important.
Let's allocate two positions, we'll come back to this, two positions for community-based organizations that are critical to this partnership.
Right.
Okay? Got that, Michelle? Okay. Can you tell me?
Does that include police, or is police separate?
That includes police.
Okay, so police would be one of those.
Police could be.
All right, so it's not going to be a category of their own?
No.
Okay, good.
Police could be one of those. How many are we up to so far, Michelle? We're up to 12.
All right, not bad.
Okay, one more. So the final category we have is any other people, including administration, because Cliff has mentioned that twice, from the school, the greater employee base of the school district.
I would feel comfortable having representation from the school-level administration.
Okay. That's one.
And, you know.
We haven't gotten to school committee members either.
There's not going to be any.
We didn't, we didn't put any school committee members yet.
Wow.
Wait a minute, could you, all right, then I need you to push.
Five parents.
Five parents.
FinCom, Board of Selectmen, WEA president or rep.
That's eight.
Two students, two community members from youth or community partners, and.
That's 12.
School employee we're talking about right now.
So we're at 12.
So if you say school committee member, that's 13.
Would be 13, if we were using one for school.
That's a good odd number.
Yeah. After that, then you're getting into major headaches with large groups.
See, okay, so Cliff, are you willing to not have an administration representative?
No. I think that we could probably cut a parent and put in an administrator.
Okay. Okay. How many, how many people feel that school administration should be represented?
Define that. Principals, is that what you're talking about?
Principals or their designee, I think someone from school administration. I mean, these are the people, these are going to make up his, her leadership team, and I think that they need to have a say at the table.
I can, I admit to a bias in this, in the sense that in normal business, the vice presidents would never pick the president. Would never be a process by which the president would be picked. The board would pick the president, but the vice presidents would never pick the president. But that's my personal professional bias, and I'm sure, or experiential bias, it's not a personal bias. And I'm sure that people within the education community could argue the other direction. So, I just don't only want to be one vote.
But let me ask you a question. In the process, would the candidates meet with administrators? So then they could have their own interview. So the administrators would interview the finalist or the candidates, and then the committee would receive feedback from the administrators that would go into their delivery.
That's not the way it works.
I agree with Cliff, that's not generally the way it works. In theory, the process is whatever we determine the process to be, but I agree with Cliff, that's not generally.
Traditionally, it hasn't worked that way.
Exactly. Exactly. Let's try to move this along. Is there, how many people feel administration, principals, or their designees should be on the committee?
You're saying one, not multiple?
One.
One or more, yes.
Yeah.
If it's not going to be part of the process, if it's not going to be part of the interview process where the administrators have the ability to interview, because when, right, when we went through a new CEO, I wasn't part of a search committee, but what I was able to do is I interviewed the candidate, and I was able to provide my feedback to the committee that ultimately was going to, and that was important information for the committee. But if that's not going to be part of the process, then.
Let me suggest the following, which is just a suggestion. You theoretically, you obviously couldn't do it with every single candidate.
No.
But if you got down to some finalists, you could have a subcommittee of the search committee that, the search committee could designate a group of administrators to interview the finalists and provide feedback to the search committee. They theoretically could do that, or we could ask them to do that. That's, that's a hybrid.
That's a procedural question.
It's a procedural question.
Because one of the most, I'm sorry, no, no, because one of the most, the administrators understand the needs of their building and the needs of the district, I would say, you know, as a whole, and it's important for them to ask specific questions of a leader who will help them in their jobs.
So, Mr. Chair?
Except, just to point of information, it would be, it would be a highly unusual applicant who didn't know their job extremely well, because probably that's the person, he or she has done it.
No, I understand, but talking about the specific needs of the district.
That's true.
School by school, the administrators can communicate that better than.
Anybody else. That's true.
Exactly.
Ken?
Yeah, so I agree. I would say leave that as procedural, that after the school committee narrows it, say, the search committee sends back five names, and the last search we did, we narrowed it down to three, and then we did the site visits to the schools that involved those three. At that point, then, we can do what Rhonda's suggesting.
Is get input from administration.
I think that would be.
So that, you're suggesting that they would not be part of the main search committee, but would be included in the process procedurally?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a consensus on that?
Mr. Chair, can I, I can't just keep my mouth shut.
Well, I encouraged Barry to.
All right.
Go ahead.
One of your next items here is to talk about the professional assistance of, to the search committee.
Yes.
And historically, and this committee has used the MASC at least twice that I'm aware of, if not more than that. That's the role that that group plays. They sit with the committee in open session like this and have these kind of conversations, because they run hundreds of searches. So, you're all searching for the answer, and I can tell you, I've been a finalist in two other places, in two other states, and they always have had building-level administration as part of the committee. Because that's who has to find out if that person can lead them to where they need to go. So, my feeling is, before this committee makes any final decisions, bring, decide if you're going to bring in professional help, meet with the professional help, and ask for their opinion before you make a decision that maybe not gets you what you want.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to tell you, the only a building-level administrator Well, ladies and gentlemen, I I I'm gonna tell you, the only a building-level administrator has the knowledge, expertise, and the background to assess the capabilities of a potential candidate. They have, they're the ones that are in the trenches, in the buildings, they know what it is, they they need to hear from a potential candidate. And I think not to have an administrator on that search committee to filter through other responses on an interview or whatever the case may be, is being shot cited by this by this committee. That's just my opinion. Not to belabor the point. I'm not gonna say anymore on the interview.
Okay, I think we have.
Hold on, Mike has something.
Sorry, Mike.
Um, I just wanted to add that my hangup with having an administrator on the committee is it's just one. Go on the other road, it's all of them. Um, so, but but I I appreciate what Dr. Rabinovich said. When I was reading through these documents, I thought that was one of the services they provided was to really the comprehensive from nuts to bolts, this being, you know, the the threads, I guess, you know?
Okay, um, I, we're going to make a recommendation, and we'll either decide to use professional services or we won't. If we do provide, decide to use professional services, um, we can make a recommendation with resp- with respect to the search committee, and they can advise us if we think we've erred. Um, I don't think, for a variety of reasons, we should leave it up. Um, we should have it start from scratch and leave it up to them, so I think this is a healthy process.
We've got a framework.
We've got a framework. I, we had three votes for one position before, I think Rhonda interrupted the flow.
Poor Rhonda.
Um, so let's allocate one position for that.
For?
For administration.
Good.
Okay, so we're up to fourteen.
And can I just make it clear that I agree that administrators should be part of this process? This is just about the initial committee. Okay, all right.
Okay, so we're up to fourteen, and my suggestion, since since we have taken a great deal of time, is we may want to think about this, and if we, and bring in the professionals, assuming we decide to do that, and leave the specific specifics as to who um until a later date. But I'm perfectly willing to continue the discussion if people would like to.
Could I ask, Michelle, how many parents and how many kids do you have on your screen?
Five parents, two of s- two special ed.
Well, I don't care about that, but five parents.
Five parents and two students.
And two two students. No, I I think that that's an area that we can look at to make it. You should have an odd number, in my opinion.
I have a suggestion. I have thirteen in front of me right now.
Thirteen's an odd number.
A total, you mean?
Yeah.
In- including the school committee? Yes.
I have thirteen. It would be just one school committee member, but.
For some reason, I think that we're off, you're off by one, but I could be wrong.
So it would be four parents, one board of selectmen, one fincom, one student, one school committee member, one admin, two community at-large, one teacher, and one WEA.
There were five s- five parents. That's the reason we're off by one.
No, 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 I'm telling, this is the new recommendation.
Oh!
Right, which would get us to thirteen. Lucky thirteen.
Sounds good to me.
Want me to read it again?
No, I I think, everybody hear that? I I sense agreement, consensus, whatever term you'd like to use.
The the only problem I'm having with it is I think we need more representation from teachers, but I I I've stated my point.
Well, you have two. WA teacher, one of the parents could be, and also you have an admin.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Okay, so we're we're at thirteen.
I mean, you've got more students than parents, you do teachers. Just from where I sit, that's kind of.
We're putting a lot of faith in the WEA president, that's true.
Which parents are you eliminating? Because you you said five, and then you told the composition of the five, so which one are you taking out?
I guess we'd.
It would be a sped.
A sped teacher, so one sped, sped parent.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're at thirteen. Um, I'd like to um go move on to proposals, unless anybody has a problem with that. Okay, I gave you two proposals to consider, and of course, those are the two main bodies, certainly in this part of the state, um, who provide this service, who specialize in this area. We theoretically could go to other other proposals. Um, any comments, first of all, on whether we wanna spend the, let's say, approximately ten thousand dollars associated with professional services? I say ten thousand, just for the public to know.
It's gonna be more than that.
There, yeah, right. There are two different proposals. One is um from the Cape Cod Collaborative. My memory says ninety-eight hundred plus advertising, and from the from MASK, it was eighty-five hundred plus expenses plus advertising. So they're they're basically in the same range, and it's going to be, as as Cliff says, um, more than ten thousand by the time you do some advertising in either Education Week or the Boston Globe or whatever places we choose.
Sites to, this computer sites.
Right, exactly.
What what was the first figure? Not the mask one, the other one?
Ninety-eight hundred, and that included expenses, but did not include advertising.
Advertising's expensive.
Yes, so the first question is, yes or no, do we we get some professional assistance? Cliff?
My, when I, when I read your email, my my initial proposal was that, and and again, I only say this because I I'm I'm still doing consulting work. I'm in different schools, I'm in different systems, and I and I see what's out there. And right now, I probably think that, I think there's somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve or thirteen openings for superintendents in the state of Massachusetts right now.
At least.
So I I I think that, um, given the fact that, you know, there's gonna be a shrinking pool, in my opinion, of applicants that um we might find acceptable, um, and the fact that, you know, let's be honest, gi- given our, given our fiscal situation and our lack of resources, I don't think if we're gonna be jumping out of this skin to apply for this position, but, you know, we'll we'll see, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. My first inclination was that, you know, we we do the search ourselves and save and save the ten or fifteen thousand dollars it's gonna cost. The only problem with that is, is you have to dedicate an awful lot of time and energy to the search process. You're gonna get applications that have to have to be screened. The only thing I didn't like the last time MASK did it is we weren't privy to all of the applications, and and I didn't like that. I I don't like the fact that we can at least see the applications of the people that they screened out on the original screening. So, uh, that, so I I thought that we might be able to do it ourselves. The second thing that I thought about was, there's another very, very large organization that does screening that wasn't even contacted, uh, which was the New England School Development Council. Um, they they they're, they do a lot of screenings, and they do a lot of screenings in this area, so they weren't even contacted. So I would suggest that maybe we contact them and see if we can get a price from them.
Do you think it's likely to be significantly different?
I don't know.
Okay.
Don't know unless you ask.
Oh, a- agreed.
Um, but I'm just saying, those are the two that you sent out, but there is another one that's very, 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 uh, um, has a very, very good reputation and is is a well-respected search engine for, there you go.
Michelle, do you have contact information for them? You do, okay.
Um, so anyway, I just brought that up, but the more I thought about it, uh, the more I thought that probably no one on this commit, well, probably no one on this committee has the the time or the the staff, uh, if you will, um, to do everything they have to do to make this thing work. But it is possible to do this on our own, and that was my initial thought, and save the fifteen K, because that's about what it's gonna cost.
Any other comments on this yes-no issue of professional services or not? Rhonda?
Well, I think that Cliff brought up a good point, which is the number of openings that are out there right now, and I'm hoping what this screening search group can do for us is help us to have more of a national reach, which I think we'll just, we have to do, and we have to ask them to do that for us, is to do more of a national search. And so that's the reason why I think it's important. This is.
But we could do that ourselves, Rhonda. I I I know the vehicle to use to do that. But but the thing is, that people are contacting these folks, and we wouldn't have that.
Well, that's if we do. We don't know the process.
No, no, what I'm saying is, what we don't have is, people are constantly calling these folks, saying, are there any superintendent openings in your area? So we wouldn't have that. So that that's the downside of doing it yourself. We'd have the, we'd have the reach, we could reach everybody. You know, in terms of Ed Week, all the 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 online services that are out there, uh, and the ve- the various consulting companies that we could contact to put the the fielders out there. But what we wouldn't get would be direct inquiry from outside in.
Well, and that that, I mean, that that then says, would we be spending more money, because we're doing all of that on our own? When you, when you're working with a group like this, they already have um the networks built, and so that's one of the things you're paying for on our end. Yes, we could post it here and there, but then would we be spending more on advertising? Would we be spending more on doing that outreach instead of just using something like this?
Mike, thoughts?
Um, I I think it's prudent to 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 go this route with with the professional, you know, group that does this sort of thing all the time. It's, it'd be money well spent.
Ken?
I agree, and just a follow-up to Dr. Sylvia's point is, if you use MASK or or Cape Cod Collaborative, couldn't you ask them that you wanna see um these applications before they're screened out?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Okay, so then I would agree with that.
And and just something else I noticed, and we're not gonna pick one, I mean, right now, are we?
No.
No, no, no.
Especially because Cliff has indicated there's another respected resource.
But just for just some food for thought, I noticed in the MASK packet, they they said, you know, basically, even if you don't choose them, that we we still have access to a ton of services that they offer. They could, they could complement the search.
Yes.
They're, we're an affiliate.
Yes, because we're a member, yes.
And they made that point clear.
Absolutely.
So there was no pressure, there was no pressure, and oh, by the way, we'll help you.
And we're also, we're also an affiliate nationally. Now, that that is a tremendous resource in terms of outreach in the entire, the entire nation.
Yeah.
Because they have a newsletter every month.
Uh, okay, so.
Just just one more point I like, if you if you if you would allow me. I agree with everyone here, that it probably would be better for us to go, um, you know, ha- have a, an agency do it for us. But I guess the thing that was bothering me in the back of my mind when I was thinking about this, thinking about this, I've been thinking about this a lot, is that, you know, I I just hate, I hate to spend this kind of money and just get such a, and I know I'm prophesizing now, and to get a limited pool of applicants, you know what I'm saying? So I guess that's that's the downside, but you can't control that one way or the other.
I feel compelled to say the following. Um, I think we were extremely lucky, maybe lucky isn't the correct term, fortunate, whatever, um, to have had Dr. Collins and Dr. Rabinovich essentially being groomed for the position. And when I went through this process indirectly with Dr. Rabinovich and directly with Dr. Collins, um, how do I say this delicately? I just guess I just won't. Um, to me, um, they were head and shoulders, the two of them, over the candidates that we were given to consider. And so I am very concerned at that, that the process that didn't produce any outstanding outside candidates will be repeated, and we don't have an inside candidate that has been so obviously groomed for this position. Um, so I'm sitting here ambivalent.
It's worse, uh, Mr. Chair, because we may have two key positions in central.
I wasn't going there, but I, yes, right. So, um, I think when it comes down to it, it behooves the representative on the search committee, um, to make it crystal clear the the kind of individual that we're looking for, um, because we don't wanna get to the position that the town that the town found, which is to reject everybody. I mean, I think that would not be um a positive for the school district.
It would not be, but I consider it a possibility, that that would happen.
Right. Um, so my ambivalence means that, um, I guess I reluctantly think it's prudent, I think, which is where Mike was coming down, for us to engage uh someone for professional assistance, but I think we need to be very actively involved to make sure that the end end result is that we're happy with the choices that we have to make. So I think the the one final piece to this, because I think this person is, needs to be, and this, of course, is a question, since we have a, we have at least tentatively agreed pending what the the professional, and I frankly doubt the professional services is going to um change our view as to what the composition should be. Uh, we need to get a school committee representative to this search committee. Is there anybody who would like to play that role?
I don't think there's anybody on the committee that would reject it, so you're the chair.
I I am I am rec- I recognize the fact that the chair is a um, is a short, relatively short-lived position, that I'm hoping that the next chair will be to my left, and so logic suggests to me that the person who's going to be immediately working with Barry's successor would be would be Rhonda. So my inclination is to ask Rhonda to accept the appointment, if she will, if she has the time, inclination, et cetera.
I would. I think that it's important to be able to have the support of this committee.
You have it. Why would you think you wouldn't?
Um, because there is a desire from another member to be on it.
Oh.
I didn't know that.
I I don't know, I just.
I didn't hear anybody else speaking up and saying, me, me, me.
Not not I.
Yes, I would like to accept.
Okay, now the question becomes, thank you. Now the question becomes, is there anything that we can empower Rhonda to do in order?
Point of honor, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we appoint Rhonda Vugan.
No.
Vugan as. Vugan, as a member of the screening committee for the new superintendent.
Second. I think we don't.
Let's make it unanimous.
We don't need further discussion on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. You have the full.
Five zero one.
Five, are you abstained? You don't have enough faith in yourself that you can vote for yourself? Four zero one, if she insists on abstaining. You have the full support of the rest of your members.
Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now, is there anything that we would like to empower our representative to do, and I say that with the idea that we don't want this process to to be delayed any more than necessary? So, for example, can we empower her to find parents, students, et cetera, to fill these positions pending the final um recommendations with, from the search, uh, professional search services? I am, I wanna be in there fighting for the best candidates ASAP.
I would suggest to put the committee in place that we know is gonna be in place. We were, we know then that we're gonna have somebody from the board of selectmen on it. We know then that we're gonna have somebody from the.
Fincom.
And we know then that we're gonna have a principal. We know then that we're gonna have, uh, the uh Teachers Association. Get those people that we absolutely know.
Well, we don't know which principal.
No, we don't. Well, we know that somehow or other, the principal is gonna get chosen.
Right.
And that's up to them. It's not up to us.
Oh, whoa, 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 are you saying we're not empowering Rhonda to pick one?
No, and then, and then, well, yeah, because I don't want it to come back on us that Rhonda handpicked everybody. That's not a good idea.
So you want Rhonda to come back to us with a final recommendation?
I want Rh- because she's not the chair. We decided that she would not be the chair. So she needs to sort of like be a go-between and get the thing organized, get get the committee identified, appoint a chair, but you know you've got a nucleus of people now that can start meeting, and and they may wanna select a chair, I don't know. But what I'm saying is, in my opinion, you 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 don't wanna run the risk of saying that we're dictating and directing the process.
Understood, and believe me, I think.
And I have full faith in Rhonda.
Yeah, so do I, but I I come back to sausage making. This, I'm sure the committee, I'm sure the public feels that they, we have been maximally transparent.
Well, anyways, that's my opinion.
Okay, um, all right, so I don't think I heard that you're empowered to do anything except get organized.
Well, I think one of the important things to have in front of this committee by next time are two to three proposals. We have two proposals here, contacting the other one and having a meaningful discussion. I mean, we ha- we do have consensus that um, we will have a a search committee. I mean, I'm sorry, a um.
Professional services.
A professional services, correct?
Correct.
So being able to vote on that, so then, I mean, well, let me ask a question. Do we want one or two to come in and present to this committee to then decide, or do we just go ahead and I'll have two proposals in front of you, and then we decide?
Mr. Chair, I I think in her new position that Rhonda should handle that. Uh, I don't think we need to be involved with someone coming in and doing a presentation in front of us. She can make a recommendation between um the group that Dr. Sylvia asked. of us. She can make a recommendation between the group that Dr. Sylvia asked to look at along with MASK and Cape Cod Collaborative, right?
Yes.
And bring it back to us and say, I review these, this is my recommendation based on whatever.
So what we're asking Rhonda to do is come back at the next meeting with a specific recommendation as to which professional services to use?
That would be my suggestion.
Anybody, anybody disagree with that? Okay.
And why or why not the others?
Sure.
But, yeah.
Okay. Anything else that you can think of that you'd like to be able to come back to the committee with?
Well...
What would you be, like to be empowered to do?
Well, I mean, I think that we have the makeup. I, the initial outreach has been done for many of the members that are on here right now, and I think that we have administrators in the room right now, that what I would ask is that the groups that we've identified today, that they are thinking about a member. So then, after we do get the recommendation, or the, the company identified, they're able to review our list, say, yes, that's something that we would absolutely sign off on. You have a good makeup of committee, well represented, and then all of a sudden, you're just, you're, you're calling those folks up and you're saying, all right, who is your member? So, I think that being able to follow up with each one of these groups, which I can do, and say, this is what the committee is thinking, but we still want to work with the company to make sure this is the right makeup. Please start thinking. It's still nothing set in stone, but you'll be getting a call, you know, as soon as the next meeting is done, asking for your member.
Okay, so, bottom line is you don't need anything else from this committee tonight?
I don't think so. I think that they've done a lot of the hard work, which is recommending what the committee makeup should be.
Okay. Anything else on this overall subject? Yes, Mike?
Just, just real quick, as, as Rhonda pointed out, a lot of the outreach has already been done. And she's referring to Mr. Chair, right?
I'm referring to the email that we received from the chair.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I just want, I just want to say, with, with all due respect to, you know, Mr. Sylvia, I totally respect where he was coming from, but I'm glad that it was done. I'm glad that you hit the ground running, and I appreciate it, and, and I think you're doing a great job as chair of this committee.
Thank you, but, okay.
If, if, if other, if other boards had the problems of a chair doing too much, I think we'd be in better shape.
Anything else on this overall subject? Cindy?
I would just like to make a comment about how you guys said that you guys wanted a student to be a representative. I don't want to stir up any type of arguments or anything like that. I just want you guys to keep this in the back of your head, that I don't think you guys can find a junior that is knowledgeable enough about the superintendent's job as a whole to make a recommendation or any type of decision. I think that slot should be best used for an administrative or a teacher or something like that, just because most people, most students don't know what's going on for the superintendent. They just know, oh, we don't have this, 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 we need this, we need money. And that's all they really know. And if you really think about it, and it's kind of like eating away at me, I know that students should be represented, but I just don't think you can find a student that is knowledgeable enough about the whole subject to be considered on the task force.
I appreciate your perspective. Thank you. Okay, is there any other business that any committee member would like to bring before the committee?
I have two points.
Yes.
If you'll humor me, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. Won't require any humor.
I just, I feel I have to, I have to comment on the last meeting. I have been thinking about it for a while, and I've been thinking of it since the last meeting, and I, I was caught completely off guard because I didn't expect for Dr. Rabbinovich to announce his retirement at the last meeting. So, you know, I know that retiring is a personal decision, but given what was given to us in this rebuttal to his evaluation, certainly, we all know that his, not concluding or not completing his contract was a, a result of a, probably a substandard evaluation. The thing that bothered me a little bit about the meeting was that, you know, there really was no response to his announcement to retire. And I know that retirement is a, a, a personal decision, a personal choice, but I, I thought that I needed to get off my chest as a committee member, and someone that has worked with, with Barry, not only as a school committee person, as our superintendent and assistant superintendent, but as a colleague. I had to get off my chest what I, what I think of him, and to, to try to have him retire on sort of a positive note. And I know that most of the people agree that he's served the Wareham community very, very well for over 20 years as a principal and assistant superintendent and superintendent. And I can honestly say that all of my dealings with Barry, his main objective was always to put the kids first, and to the best he could for the kids. And, so, I, I think that I needed to say that, and, you know, I think that he, he really did do some really, really good things. He was always open to ideas. He thought out of the box. He's put in some, some strategies in, in terms of helping to shrink that achievement gap, and unfortunately, he's not going to be at the controls to really see these, these strategies unfold and come to fruition. So, I, I think that I needed to say, you know, how much I appreciated his work, and, you know, different things that I, I look back on that, you know, he was one of the few superintendents that actually moved into town. And I think that says a lot, and it gives him a unique perspective on the town, on the unique makeup of this town, on the diversity of this town. So, you know, I think that, I think that, you know, the town has been better off, in, in my opinion, having Barry as a professional staff member. So, I, I know that he's probably, doesn't think that he's going out on a high note. You know, I retired from Sandwich High as principal, and I, I thought I went out on a high note, and I felt real good about my accomplishments and what I have accomplished, and, and the respect that I have from the staff. And I, I hope that Barry doesn't go out with, with a lack of enthusiasm for us, and, but unfortunately, he probably won't have that sense of, of professional experience of going out on a high note. So, I want to, I want to thank him for me, for not only being a colleague, but being caring and dedicated to the kids at Wareham. And I just felt that I needed to say that last week, but things just happened so fast that I couldn't get it off my chest. So, I just, I thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me get it, get it off my chest, and I just, I, I want Barry to feel that, you know, in a lot of different ways, he was respected and appreciated his efforts. My second point is, we're talking about realignment. We're talking about, maybe on the budget meeting, talking about a five-through-eight configuration. I would really like to get, have a conversation with anybody who would like to have a conversation with me about a five-through-seven configuration. To me, a five-through-seven configuration makes a lot more sense. It makes a lot more sense in terms of the developmental aspect of those kids in middle school. And if it was up to me, I think there is a lot of merit, especially in extracurricular and experiential education, to looking at an eight-through-12 configuration. So, I, I would just like to have a conversation with somebody about it, a five-through-eight, a five-through-seven, eight-through-12 configuration. I think that our facilities can handle it, but I don't know what the future holds in terms of growth, but we have done a longitudinal study on that, and it doesn't look like we're gonna be affected that dramatically in the future in terms of growth. So I think that the high school can handle another grade. So, I would just like to have a conversation with that, maybe before we actually have that open hearing on, on the budget.
I'm open to the conversation, love to have it with you, but my private conversations with Principal Palladino was that after he studied his school, he feels he does not have room for the eighth grade currently.
And that is also taking into consideration those portables over there?
Yes.
Really? I'd still like to have a conversation with you about it, because I still think it can be done.
Yep, and for somebody that ran a six-through-eight middle school, and did a lot of research about five-through-eight middle schools, the difference between fifth and sixth grade developmentally is a lot less than when we look at eighth to 12th graders. So, yes, I'd be, love to have a conversation about it. I think there's a lot of material.
There's a huge leap.
And I know the difference...
For a fifth grader to an eighth grader.
Yes, well, and that's why what you'll hear from Mr. Gilmore is that this building, as when it was the high school, and the south wing was used for seventh and eighth grade at one point, and had its own a principal's office. If you separate that grade level from the rest, curricular-wise, it's closer. But, yes, I think a private conversation, since it's quarter or 10, because this could go on for hours.
No, no, not tonight. No, no, no.
No, I knew you didn't mean tonight.
Oh, no, no, no.
And, and Cliff, I'll go this far. The, the hearing that we're gonna have on January 3rd?
9th. The public hearing about the grade.
The 9th, thank you. On the 9th. If, if, as a result of your private conversations, and they may include Scott as well, it turns out that you convinced them that it's a viable...
Oh, I don't think I'll convince them. I just want to have a conversation.
Well, my point, my point is, we could always include that as part of the public hearing. Right now, I have not, because I was told it literally couldn't, it wasn't, didn't have the support of the principal.
Well, that's important.
And so, it was, in a sense, it was academic, and, and I don't think it had the support of the superintendent as well. So, okay, anything else? Anything else?
Obviously.
Or me.
Anything else that members would like to bring before the committee? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
I'm not available tomorrow. I don't even know why.